All right, well, welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I work in Eagles Environmental Support Division. If you've been to any of our public meetings before, you probably recognize my face. Our Air Quality Division hosts quite a few of these every year. We used to do them in person, but now we're doing them virtually, at least for the most part, for a little while longer here. Tonight, we're going to be talking about FCA's Warren Truck Facility and we're talking about a proposed air permit that they have. But before I get down to some of the nitty gritty and introducing the rest of the staff that are going to be with us tonight, I do want to introduce our decision maker, who is Jay Oligar, our Assistant Division Director for the Air Quality Division. He just wants to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. So Jay, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. I'd like to personally thank all of you for taking time out of your evening to participate in this informational session and public hearing. The draft permit that is the subject of this hearing is written with the public and the environment in mind. Public participation is very important to us and a vital way to work toward Eagles' mission of protecting public health and the environment. Public participation also creates opportunities for conversation and discussion on the proposed permit changes. We especially appreciate your flexibility in participating with us virtually, given the challenges posed by the current COVID-19 pandemic. We understand the situation you are living in right now is very challenging and challenges can vary from person to person and family to family. We know this method of public participation is not perfect and we welcome your thoughts as we continually look for ways to improve our outreach. I will be listening in tonight, so my decision on the proposed permit keeps you, your comments and your concerns in mind. Thank you again for joining us. This time, Jennifer, I will turn things back to you.
Thanks so much, Jay. I really appreciate it. I'm glad so many people could join us tonight. Before we get started, I want to just make sure that you all know that Jay and I are not the only ones on the line tonight. I have some other Air Quality Division staff. So staffers, if you can just turn your cameras on just for a quick minute here, so that I can introduce all of you and let folks know who they might be able to ask questions of after this first informational session portion is over. So the first person I want to introduce is Dave Thompson and he is our Permit Engineer. He did a lot of the nitty gritty work on this permit, proposed permit, that we're going to be talking about tonight. And you're going to be hearing a lot more from him later. He's going to be doing the majority of sort of the background information that we're going to be talking about later. But a lot of other people are involved in writing these draft permits, so that we make sure that we're looking at everything that might be applicable to the situation, to what the company has come to us asking for. So we also have for you tonight, Brian Hughes. He's our lead toxicologist on the project. We have Susan Kilmer and she works in our Air Monitoring Division. And she does a lot of work with the measuring stations that are all around the state, so she can answer some questions if you have any about outdoor air quality, things like that. We also have Steph Hanks, but she does the air modeling, which is a little bit different. And what she does is she uses a computer model to take what FCA has been, FCA has asked us for, and looks at what it might do, those pollutants that might be coming out, what those might do in the areas around the facility specifically. We also have Bob Burns with us tonight and he does a lot of inspections on the auto plants. So he's going to be here to talk with you guys about any inspection related questions that you might have. So we've got a nice team of folks that have worked on this draft permit for you to ask questions on. And we'll get to the question and answer portion after Dave gives us a little bit of a rundown of what's going on with this proposed permit. So staff, if you guys want to turn your cameras off, you can, Dave, you might want to leave yours on, just because I'm going to pass it over to you in just a minute here. So just a little bit about how the evening is going to go, or I mean, hopefully it's not the whole evening, but how we're going to kind of present things to you today. So the first thing we're going to do is what we're calling an information session. And basically what that's going to do is Dave's going to talk to you a little bit about what the Air Quality Division does. And I know he's going to tell you this too. So if you've kind of heard this before, it might be a little bit of old hat to you, but a lot of folks that we have come to our meetings don't really know what we do. So we want to talk a little bit about that. And then we're going to be talking about what the proposed permit is. So FCA came to us with a certain proposal. We've written a draft permit and that's what we're going to be presenting to you tonight. Once we get to the end of that part, we want to open it up for question and answer. So this is going to be your opportunity to ask the staff that I just introduced to you some questions. Maybe you have questions about air quality and maybe you have questions about the proposed permit and we're happy to answer those for you. Once that is done, or at seven o'clock, whichever comes first, we're going to shift over to the public hearing. So the difference between this first part of the night and when we get to the public hearing is that the public hearing doesn't really offer us an opportunity for back and forth interaction. It's simply the part of the evening where we'll open it up and then we'll ask you if you have any comments that you would like to submit on the record. I'll talk to you a little bit more about how you can do that when we get to that section. So either you'll be able to do those verbally, or if you want to put those in writing and I can read them off. And then you'll also have an opportunity after tonight, the, the comment period extends beyond this meeting. So you have plenty of opportunities to kind of think about what your comments might be. And I'll tell you some other ways that you can submit those afterwards, if you'd like to do that. Then I'm also going to talk to you a little bit about where you might find other information and who you can contact, particularly the staff that we have here tonight and maybe some other folks as well. If you have further questions later on, or you go, you know, after this hearing and meeting tonight and you're like, hey, I have still a question about this, but I want to get answered before I submit my comment. No problem. So we'll talk about that as well. A little bit about the evening, just logistically. So your lines are going to be muted for the most part. We're recording this. So what we do is we take all of our meetings and hearings that are like this. We post them on YouTube and we get them closed captioned, so that if you have anyone who has English as a second language concerns, or they couldn't be here tonight, there's an opportunity for them to be able to view this meeting afterwards. And we'll let you all know when that meeting has been posted. But today's Wednesday, so it's typically will be Friday or maybe Monday that we'll get that posted with closed captions. And so if you do know someone with English as a second language, those closed captions, you can actually translate those live and you can read them in a different language if you'd like to. All right. So how to ask a question? I see somebody already put a question in there. So that's great. You know how to do it already. So we'll use that question and answer box for the most part to type in your question. So you can do that at any time during the evening tonight. And then you can also, when we get to that section of the evening, if you want to raise your hand to ask a question and ask it verbally, I'm happy to do that. Sometimes for some reason I can't unmute everybody, but I'll do my best. So you just want to raise your hand with that icon on the bottom of your screen. Or if I have folks calling in, you can use that pound two. And I do have one person calling in tonight. So if you have a question and you're just on the phone, you can use pound two to raise your hand. And so I'll actually be able to see that, which is a kind of interesting feature. So at this point, Dave, I'm going to pass it over to you. If you want to make sure that you have your camera on and you can go ahead and share your screen right over mine whenever you're ready.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Jen. I will give me a second and I will get this going. Well, did I share the right screen here? Are you seeing?
Yep, looks great. I see cows, cars and a company. And I think that is what you want us to see, correct?
Yep, that sounds good. Okay. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. As Jen said, my name is Dave Thompson. I am the Lead Permit Engineer and one of multiple AKD staff involved in the review for the proposed changes at FCA Warren, Warren Truck Assembly Plant. Now, as Jen said, we're going to, for anybody who's been to some of these, some of this information is going to be a little repetitive, but we wanted to get that out there and have a little bit of explanation on what the AKD does. Excuse me, what the AKD does. And then we're going to talk a little bit more about the proposed project. So please bear with me. So we know that pollution comes from many different things, such as big farms, fuel burning vehicles and various industrial sources. So the overall mission of the Air Quality Division is to protect health and the environment. And the AKD has the authority to do this by regulating industrial sources. So there are different functions within the AKD. For example, some air quality staff monitor levels of air pollutants. Other staff examine, you know, pollutant compounds that we refer to as toxic air contaminants to make sure public health is protected. District inspectors conduct inspections of regulated facilities and the AKD reviews applications and writes permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with our rules and regulations. Excuse me. So the AKD has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants as, as I have repeated, as I'm repeating. However, I do want to point out a few items that the draft permit does not cover and that the AKD does not have the ability to regulate. You will want to talk to your local government if you have questions or concerns about issues such as zoning, noise and traffic. So next, I'm going to go through a simplified overview of the steps that are taken to get a proposed draft permit ready for comment. First, the applicant plans the project. They then submit a permit application to the AKD. The application is reviewed by an engineer. Once a proposed draft permit is peer reviewed and approved by a supervisor, it is sent to the company for review and posted for public comment. Comments received during the public comment period are evaluated and can potentially lead to changes in the proposed permit. And finally, a decision is made on the permit and the decision can be one of three things. It can be approved. It can be approved with changes or it can be denied. Next, I'm going to talk a little bit about the proposed permit. I would like to note that although there was a merger and a new company, there's Stellantis was created. The plants in Michigan and the state of Michigan continue to operate under the name FCA. So the draft permit continues to have FCA as the facility name. And even if the facility were to change names in the future, the permits would still remain active. So this particular application is for the FCA Warren Truck Assembly Plant, which houses an automotive assembly line. And automotive assembly line consists of three main portions. There is a body shop for assembly of the unpainted vehicle, a paint shop where various paints and materials are applied, and the auto assembly area where final operations such as glass, engine and tire installation are performed. PTI number 1319A, which was issued on August 26th, 2019, allows Warren Truck to build a second paint shop and make certain paint, certain changes to the existing assembly line. And these updates result in this line at the, in this design at the facility. There would be one paint shop or one body shop going to two paint shops with the new paint shop referred to as West and the existing paint shop referred to as East, and then it would come back together into one general assembly area. So PTI 1319A requires control equipment in the paint shop. For example, the main coating portions will be controlled by a concentrator and an oxidizer, and there will be multiple particulate control systems installed. In addition, all natural gas equipment in the West Paint Shop will create lower levels of a pollutant called oxides of nitrogen, which is commonly known as NOx, through the installation of low NOx burner. So basically, when, when you combust natural gas, it produces NOx, the type of burners they're going to install produce less of it. As noted earlier, the existing assembly line is also changing. For example, the existing east paint shop contains a coating tank, which is referred to as E coat and spray booths on two top coat lines that have historically operated uncontrolled. As part of the update to the east paint shop, the E coat tank and spray booths of for one top coat line will have control equipment installed to reduce VOC emissions. The other top coat line will be shut down after installation of the West Paint Shop. In addition, existing processes in the assembly line were evaluated during the course of application review and some emission limits were lowered based on that review. So what is FCA requesting for this project? So FCA is proposing changes to the original project permitted under PTI 1319A. These include changes to the amounts and size of some natural gas equipment, updating existing emission and material usage limits, changing the proposed location for certain equipment and changing certain stack sizes. One thing I did want to note that none of the proposed changes result in a different level of control than was required in PTI 1319A. So while reviewing a proposed project, the AKD looks at a number of items. The AKD reviews the level of emissions to figure out how that project should be classified. And based on that level of emissions and the type of equipment, we determine what type of review is needed, including which rules and regulations that project is subject to. The application addresses specific state and federal regulations, whether it applies to the proposed project and how the project would comply with each applicable regulation. So through the review process and during development of the proposed draft permit, AKD has ensured that the applicable state and federal rules have been met. So one part of figuring out whether specific rules are applicable to a project is the location of the facility. So this map shows the current attainment status for the state of Michigan. An area is considered to be in non-attainment if air concentrations of certain pollutants are above the national standards. Michigan currently has non-attainment areas for two pollutants. One is ozone, which is the dark blue, and then there's sulfur dioxide, which is also known as SO2, and that is the striped light blue areas on the right side of the map or the inset area. So Warren Truck is located in an area that is considered non-attainment for ozone, which is regulated through two other pollutants, NOx, as I referred to before, and volatile organic compounds, which are also known as VOCs. If the emissions increase from a project for either of these pollutants is high enough, then that pollutant needs to go through what is called a non-attainment permit review. So PTI 1319A was subject to non-attainment permit review for VOCs because of the level of proposed emissions. Now, although the project was approved, the proposed changes to the project required a new permit review, including an updated non-attainment review for VOCs. One part of the non-attainment permit review is performing what is referred to as a lowest achievable emission rate or layer analysis. This means that the Warren Truck Project must meet or exceed the lowest emission rate required by any state law or the lowest emission rate that has been achieved in practice for similar processes. Now, the previous layer review was reevaluated and resulted in similar conclusions. This includes the use of thermal oxidizers on large coating operations to reduce the amount of VOC emissions entering the air. Now, another important piece of non-attainment permit review is referred to as offsets. Now, offsets are emission reductions in the same pollutant from the same non-attainment area that must be greater than the emissions increase in the proposed pro, excuse me, proposed project. So the Warren Truck Project resulted in a total of about 206.3 tons per year of VOC emissions that must be offset by a reduction of just under 227 tons. So available reductions from existing equipment at Warren Truck are greater than that amount. They're greater than 200 reductions at Warren Truck and existing equipment were greater than that 227 tons per year. So therefore, there are enough offsets from the proposed project to proceed with the application and review. In addition to meeting non-attainment review requirements, the Warren Truck Application shows that the project will meet other applicable rules and regulations. Some of these include, as I referred to earlier, their, their compounds referred to as toxic air contaminants. They have to meet certain health-based screening levels that are developed by the AKD. And in this case, all compounds emitted from the project would. We also performed computer simulations, which is referred to as modeling. And this was performed for NOx and two sizes, two different sizes of particulate matter. One particulate matter that is equal to or less than 10 microns in diameter and even smaller particulate matter that is equal or equal to or less than 2.5 microns. And the results of that modeling showed that no violation of any national standard is expected. In addition, from other, from some of the other applicable rules, the assembly line would be required to place particulate filter systems on all spray coating out processes to lower the amount of dust and paint particles that exit the plant. If the permit is approved, FCA would have to comply with all final conditions that have incorporated the review of state and federal regulations. Excuse me. And based on the review performed, the final conditions for the proposed permit contain emission limits for the pollutants listed here. For people on the phone, I'll go through the list. There are VOCs. There's particulate matter, which is known as PM. There's PM 10, PM 2.5, NOx and carbon monoxide, which is also known as CO. There are also limits on the amount of natural gas that can be used at the facility. In addition to the emission limits, the proposed draft permit contains testing, monitoring and record keeping requirements that would be used to show that Warren Truck meets its emission limits. And the combination of emission limits, testing, monitoring and record keeping requirements would ensure that the Warren Truck Project complies with the rules and regulations. Thank you for listening, Jen. I'm going to go back to you and we will continue with a question and answer portion.
All right, thanks. Here, let me just shift over from you. Stop spotlighting Dave, so he doesn't have to be quite in the spotlight again. I'm going to ask the rest of my staff here to go ahead and turn their videos on. And we're going to shift over to the question answer portion of the night. So I just want to go over quickly again for anyone who may not have been on yet, maybe came in a little bit late, how to ask a question of our staff tonight. Like I mentioned earlier, you can use that question and answer box at the end, at the end of your screen. I'm sorry, at the bottom of your screen and go ahead and type in your question. You can also raise your hand using either the hand icon at the bottom of your screen or if you are calling in, you can use that pound two on your phone and that should alert us that you have a question. So just to reintroduce the panel, you just met Dave and Dave again is the Lead Permit Engineer for this proposed permit. Then we've got Bob Burns. He works actually in our Lansing District Office, but he does a lot of our auto facilities and he has a lot of expertise and experience with doing inspections and compliance. So if you have questions about that, he would be a great one to be able to answer. Steph Hanks, but she does our air modeling. So Dave had mentioned that as well. That's that computer modeling, which sometimes it's a little bit hard to envision, but it really is a useful tool for us to look at what the company is asking us and say, you know, is it actually going to meet the regulations and compliant and make, have it be okay for folks that live around the facility? We've got Brian Hughes again. He's our Toxics Manager and he can talk about the toxic air contaminants that Dave mentioned they looked at for the facility. Susan Kilmer is in our Air Monitoring Unit. She's a manager there as well. And she's can talk about some of that outdoor sort of air sampling that we do around the state as well. So I see we've got a question here. All right. So the question is, and Dave, this one is going to go to you. And this is just talking about the offsets. The question is, where will the offset reductions actually occur? So if you could talk about that, that would be awesome.
No, no problem. In this case, the offsets are going to occur at the, at the Warren Truck Assembly Plant. They are, the additional, basically they are installing control equipment and taking reductions based off that installation and reductions in some of the different existing, existing emission, existing equipment at the facility such that the, the, the VOCs produced and the reductions are all coming from the same plant of Warren Truck.
Okay, thank you. So just as we wait for any other questions to come in, I did share in the chat earlier today and you can't use the chat to talk back. I know that's kind of strange, but I did share in the chat the link directly to the information about this facility that we have on our website. So just to go over that a little bit, if you're, if you're interested and looking at that a little bit more, when you go, when you click on that link, it's going to take you to our public comment page for our air permits, not the title five permits, but just the permits to install that we're talking about tonight. And when you click on that page, the first top permit you're going to see is one for Cal Sac. So you're just going to have to scroll down and you'll get to FCA. There's a bunch of different pieces of information in there. If you are just hearing about this facility tonight, you might want to start with looking at the proposed project summary. That gives a pretty high level overview, a little bit more detail than what Dave talked about tonight, or I guess maybe a little bit different kinds of detail than what he talked about tonight, but definitely some information about the facility. And if you're really interested in digging deep into the review that was done on this draft permit, you might want to look at that technical fact sheet, which has a lot of very rule related sort of information, but kind of talks about the review that the permit engineer goes through as they're developing the conditions that go in the permit. And then of course, there's the draft permit conditions also that are available on that website if anyone is interested in looking at those. So like I mentioned before too, we will have some time after this comment period and this hearing is finished tonight. So tonight is not your only opportunity to provide a comment, I guess, is what I want to make sure everyone knows. We will have some other opportunities for you a little bit longer to provide comment and I'll go over those in a minute. Just kind of dilly-dallying a little bit to give folks time to ask any other questions that they might have of our staff here before we go ahead and start the hearing. So I'm going to give you guys just a minute here in case you're, and someone is feverishly typing to get that question in. All right, this is a great question. So Dave, this one's going to go to you as well. This is one is regarding non-attainment. You talked about that a little bit earlier. So if we need to bring the map up, we can. But I guess what I want you to envision as a Michigander is that the non-attainment area that we're talking about is, you know, multi-county area around Detroit. So it's not just Wayne County. It's those other counties surrounding that too. So the question says, how is this expected to impact the non-attainment area around the greater Detroit area? So would it have any impact on that non-attainment designation? And Dave, I know that this, it might be a little bit out of your realm. So if you feel that there's someone else better on the panel to answer, or if we might have to get back to this questioner, we might not be able to, but if we need to provide more information later, we can do that too. But if you have some feedback that you want to give, please feel free.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can provide some impact, some, basically some, I would say a concept of what type of reductions we are looking at for, for this particular area or this particular project as opposed to what is being created. As I said, there's about 206 tons of additional VOCs that have to be offset and the required amount of offsets is about 227. And you know, ba, basically what you do is you take to, to a common offset, it has to be based off of actual emissions. You, you have to reduce your actual emissions, not what you were allowed to emit. You have to reduce your actual emissions and as, as a, as a concept of what we're looking at is the overall reduction in VOCs and tons per year from this is, as I said, there's 200, I'm repeating myself, there's 200, about 206 tons per year that are being created that have to be offset. Overall, once the project is done, we're looking at about a 700, about approximately a 700 ton reduction of VOC emissions from this plant, from where they have emitted at in the past, in the past five years. So you know, overall, it's, it's about 600 tons per year. What that will do for the ozone specifically, I can't really speak to that, but you know, since VOC is a precursor, it is emitted up into the air and creates ozone. Over time, it's spread out over the area. This is, you know, and this large of reduction is, is, it's, it's a decent reduction compared to the amount that is being created. I guess if, if you have a, you know, we can probably, if you want to provide your, your, for more specifics, for more specifics on how we're, we're approaching the non attainment area, then you know, feel, please provide your contact information and we'll, we can get back to you for.
Yeah, we can definitely, I think we def- we have staff that can have pretty in-depth conversations on non attainment. We're doing a lot of work just regionally across the state with our non attainment areas, um, working very, very hard to try to get back into attainment. The whole idea of non attainment is a pretty large issue, um, which is really interesting, but when we think about ozone um, and kind of what Dave was talking about earlier, where he's talking about, you know, VOCs and those oxides of nitrogen that get um, emitted into the air, mix around in the right temperature and then create ozone and kind of move around the state. So it is a bigger issue. It's a great question. And this was a question that kind of follows up to that and, and you had talked about Dave, the, that the emissions reductions have to be actual. So when you talk about that, uh, the question was actually how much monitoring for compliance to make sure the offsets are being used. So can you talk a little bit about how we actualize, I guess, to those offsets? So how do we know that the company is actually doing the offsets and, and a little bit about how those permitted limits have to be um, enforced ahead of time before this all actually happens? If you can talk a little bit about that, I would appreciate it.
Well, there is, there is record keeping and it's, it's typically on what we refer to as a rolling twelve month um, uh, record keeping and basically the way non attainment works is that the offsets have to be realized before the new emissions are created. So um, basically if they were to have, you know, if, if, if FCA proposed a hundred ton, or if, if, if an applicant proposes so many tons, the, the, the offsets that they are proposing have to be realized. And that's, they basically, they, they have required, there are requirements go on the permit along with record keeping and other, other requirements, as I said, monitoring, record keeping. They keep track of how much materials they use, how much VOCs those would create. Um, the offsets have to be realized before the, the new VOCs are created. So they have to realize that what is referred to as realize those offsets prior to um, the new paint, you know, they, so if a paint booth creates so many VOCs, then they have to have realized those prior to that, that paint booth creating those.
I think you almost got there with that answer. So I guess what I would say on this one is this permit wouldn't be, if it was issued as it was, FCA would have already had to have taken basically those reductions that they're, that they're asking for, those offsets that they're asking for. They wouldn't be allowed to install all this equipment, start operating it, and then the offsets come off. So it all has to be done ahead of time. Um, this is shifting gears a little bit and the question is, it says, I'm a Detroit resident living on the border of East Eight Mile. Over the years, we've had some problems with heavy VOC emissions coming from the existing paint booth at FCA Warren Truck Assembly Plant. I'm concerned about the expansion now having two paint booths. Will we have even more emissions and odor problems? So Dave, I want you, I know you had talked a little bit about how the actual volatile organic compound emissions. If this project is approved, that those actual emissions would actually be reduced. So the emissions that they have there, that they were allowed in the past would actually be reduced. So, um, but yeah, having two paint booths as opposed to one or two paint lines as opposed to one paint line, that does sound like it could be concerning. So can you maybe talk a little bit more about um, the control that the facility will have? Um, those VOC reductions again, just kind of talk a little bit about those. And then what I want to do is I want to pass it over to Bob after that. So he can talk a little bit about um, how the air quality division inspection staff respond to any odor complaints. And if people have odor complaints, um, if that happens in the future, certainly after any new equipment would be put in, how they can get ahold of us and um, make sure that they lodge those complaints so that we can respond to those. So Bob, just putting you on, on standby there. But Dave, if you want to talk a little bit about those reductions, again, a minute, I would appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. Um, as I said, historically, um, the uh, Warren Truck Assembly Plant has operated with, it is one paint shop, but there are actually two, what we refer to as top coat lines going through that paint shop and, and the, the, the spray booths on those have historically operated uncontrolled. Uh, as a result of the review and this application, what is going to basically happen is they are going to install the new west paint shop. And they are going to have that, that is going to be fully controlled. So all of the large level uh, top, you know, top coat line guide, yeah, there's different levels. There's a primer, there's a top coat, there, there's different levels of coating that are typically considered, you know, larger coating processes than the others. Those are going to be controlled uh, with an oxidizer. So basically they spray it on, the, the volatile organic compounds come off in either the spray booth or in the oven when it is cured. All of that is going to be routed to a, what is referred to as a concentrator and then an oxidizer. It's going to, to um, which is going to control a number of those through oxidation, a lot of the VOCs through oxidation, uh, basically burning it with a natural gas. And the existing, one of the existing lines on the existing coating line is going to also be fully controlled. And after the new west, uh, the new paint shop is installed, the the let the um, basically color booth two is what is referred to, this, the second color line, uh, a paint line is going to be shut down. So basically you're going to go from two, at the end of the day, after the project is done, you're going to go from two that are, have uncontrolled spray booths uh, to, to paint shops that are, that have all paint, all the spray booths controlled. And the resulting uh, emissions reduction um, from the top coat lines, I believe that there where their emissions were in, in about, you know, in the last five years, I, were approximately five to six hundred tons for each line is going to become in the area of around um, I apologize. I'm trying, basically the reductions are going to be about eight hundred tons of, or I'm sorry, six hundred tons from those, if I remember correctly. I apologize. I don't have the number right in front of me, but it is a significant reduction and that's, you know, that's most, that's, that's going to control a significant amount of VOCs.
So typically when you use an oxidizer, like a piece of control equipment to reduce the VOCs exiting the facility like Dave's talking about, that does a lot of times also reduce the odors that are typically um, associated with those volatile organic compounds. So I know the questioner had asked a kind of a follow-up question and Bob, I am going to pass this over to you in just a second. Just basically saying, you know, can we get a list of these specific VOCs? So that's definitely, there's um, and you, some of that we might have to FOIA Dave if I'm not um, lying about that, but that information is available. Um, when a company comes to us and wants to do a new paint line like this, part of doing that is, you know, giving us information specifically about the kinds of coatings they're going to use. But when you get to your questions about odors, a lot of times when you have these pieces of control equipment, that is one of the things that they do. They do not, they not only reduce emissions, but they also can reduce some of those odors, those kind of sweet paint odors that are typically associated with coating lines like this and with VOCs. But I want to make sure that you know exactly who you can call if you have odor issues um, with this facility or any other facility around you. So Bob, can you talk just briefly about um, how the air quality division handles complaints? And then I know the questioner asked for who they should contact about this facility and we might have to give that information a little bit later on in the evening, but we will definitely do that. But if you can go ahead and talk about that, that would be great.
Sure. Um, yeah, we accept complaints during normal business hours um, with the source inspectors that are covering for this facility. Uh, that person's name would be Arana Kanana Holly, and he is out of the Warren district office. So anytime during normal business hours, if you smell or detect um, odors or paint fumes coming from this facility, we will uh, provide you Arana's number or we'll try to at the end of this closure of the meeting here. Another way possible is you could also call our environmental assist. They also um, just answer not only odor complaints, but they also answer general questions about anything you may have in terms of not just air, but it could be water, waste or other issues with the facility and they can help direct and assist you in ways of getting your answers or complaints uh, answered. We have a new um, complaint link on our website. You can submit a complaint through our website. And then for after our business complaints, uh, we also have our uh, environmental uh, pollution emergency alert system phone number that you can call that anytime, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. So those are the, the four ways that are possible. Someone can submit a complaint uh, for any air facility within the state of Michigan.
Yep. Thank you for that. And we will definitely supply Arana's contact information and Bob's contact information while everybody on the panel, I think, and Arana's is kind of how we had that set up at the end of the evening. Um, so Dave, this one is going to go back to you and this is in regard to non attainment again. So the question was, were NOx emissions for this project evaluated in regard to non attainment?
Uh, no, the NOx, uh, the non attainment rules kick in when uh, the emissions from a project for a pollutant result in what we refer to as a, a, either a major uh, a major uh, emission source or a major modification. And in this case, since it's an existing facility um, that is, they would have to do what is called a a major modification, which is a project that would result in more than forty tons per year of NOx. And the facility um, took emission limits or not emission, but yes, emission limits and basically usage limits, other things that would restrict them to less than that forty tons per year for the project. So therefore it is not subject to non attainment review. However, it did go through, all of the emissions did get modeled for NOx and compared to the, the relative standards and it showed that it was less than that. Yeah. In addition, um, Stephanie hangs by, yeah, I might, uh, if you have anything to add to this, there is a uh, in an ozone non attainment area, there's, there's called an ozone impact analysis where we um, basically we, we compare the, the proposed VOC and NOx emissions to what is, what it, how is it, how it is expected to affect the ozone in the area. And in this case, it is not expected to affect uh, the ozone for the emission levels that they are, they are proposing. Um, and Stephanie, I don't know if you had anything to add to that for, in terms of the ozone impact analysis or the modeling.
Um, no, I really don't have a whole lot to, to add aside from the asset. Um, NOx was evaluated for modeling um, with the emissions that the facility will be um, emitting and that they're proposing to admit um, all existing and proposed equipment changes. Um, and it was a combined analysis as well. So it did include some other um, sources, the nearby um, Warren stamping plant was included, emissions from that facility and also DTE's um, nearby peaking facility. So it was a combined analysis and in turn, um, when we do model NOx, we also add in the background concentration. So it isn't just the facility itself um, that is looked at. It's also a combination of what um, other facilities in the area and what we um, our monitors are showing is the background concentrations is a combination of all three to make sure that those are below, below the um, standards that EPA have set for NOx. And um, there are two average times for NOx and yes, both of those did show compliance that their overall impacts were less than the national ambient air quality standards. And then for the ozone secondary and now, or for the secondary analysis, like David mentioned, VOCs and NOx um, form into, they are um, pollutants that will secondarily form into ozone or could potentially depending of course, on the environment and the weather conditions in place. So there is a screening um, methodology that EPA has to determine based on the emissions of VOCs and NOx to calculate what we would expect the increase of ozone to be um, because of the secondary formation of ozone from those pollutants. And they were well below the um, significant impact level that are that is set place for, that EPA has um, of one part per billion um, that was below that. And so we did evaluate that as well.
All right. Well, thank you. So I don't have any other questions. I do have another question. Thank you. Perfect. All right. So this question is, um, I think that you mean VOC, but I'm just going to read it as it is. It says, yes, what is the baseline impact for these VOV? I think it's VOC reductions over time. Will there be an increase in VOCs, et cetera? How quick of a response will we get if we call? Um, the questioner says that they have experienced smells in the past and, and with the monitoring being done, how often will we verify those emissions reductions? So um, uh, there's a bunch of just questions on here. So let's, let's look at these one at a time here. So VOC reductions over time, Dave, I don't know, is that, or would it be something immediate if the permit was issued?
Well, because it's a rolling twelve, it's, it's what we refer to as a rolling twelve month. It will take some time for basically what that means is that every, every month, um, because the majority of the actual like record keeping, how much they emit um, is, is done every month. It is called a rolling twelve months. So basically if you are in, you know, if, if you end December of a year, then you take the last twelve months. So it's from January to December. Um, that's your rolling twelve months and then you um, and at the end of January, you drop off the January from the year before and you have from February until January. So it does take some time because you do have historical emissions at the facility that are at uncontrolled levels. You know, so basically if you um, for example, if you have say a piece of equipment that had, that emits at ten tons over a month, you put control on that, that controls eighty percent of that, you have two tons, but you still have that ten tons from last month that you have to, to work out. So historically, the facility has emitted in in the range of fifteen hundred tons per year, sixteen hundred tons per year. Bob, if I'm wrong on that, please, please let me know. And after the after this, uh, at basically after this um, if this project were, were to go through and, and to start, then it would, if you add up all of the VOC emissions, it would be less than half of that overall, over the course of time. That's how much they are allowed to admit, not, not what they would actually admit, because that's dependent on demand and, and, and other factors.
So it, so what I'm hearing you say is that if this permit was issued and they put the new equipment in as it is, just yet, let's say we didn't make any changes based on the comments. Then the reductions that are in the permit that you had talked about, those would be realized. We would see those reductions in a year. We would see those reductions in a month. Like when would we see those reductions in the actual emissions?
Well, the reductions in actual emissions would begin as soon as they, as soon as they install the equipment.
But they, so I guess what I'm getting at Dave is I want to make sure that we, folks understand that if this permit was issued as it is, like I said, with no changes from, you know, comments from folks, that the company would have to comply with all of the conditions all of the time. It's not like they would be like, oh, you know, up here because they weren't ready. Once they get that permit and they install that equipment, they have to be complying with all of the conditions in the permit at that time. It's not like it's something gradual that they get to do when they feel like it or whatever. It's something that they have to do based on those, those permit conditions.
Yeah, you're correct. And I might have, I might have over explained.
No, that's okay. I mean, it's.
In the record, there's a difference between what the actual emissions are that are being emitted and the record keeping.
Yep.
Um, and the way that the record keeping is done and it's somewhat complicated.
It's a complicated process and it's complicated permitting process and talking about twelve month rolling and how we calculate things is cumbersome. Um, but the fact of the matter is that if the permit was issued as it is, the company would have to comply with all of those conditions. They don't get to pick and choose. But just, they have to comply with all of them. That is the requirement. If they weren't, that's where someone like Bob or Arana, the inspector would come in and during a record keeping and an inspection where they're walking around the facility, looking at what those emissions are and saying like, hey, is the company complying with the permit? If they are not, that's when we take extra steps. So those kinds of um, evaluations happen on a fairly regular basis. So Bob, if, can you talk a little bit about, you know, how often an inspector? So those kinds of evaluations happen on a fairly regular basis. So Bob, if can you talk a little bit about, you know, how often an inspection would occur? How often we would be looking at those records? So let's say they got the permit tomorrow. They installed the equipment really fast. And by the end of the week, they were up and running, let's just say. So what would your sort of inspection process look like? How often would folks be out there? How often would we be doing checks and balances to make sure this company is in compliance and doing everything that they're required to do?
Sure, Dan. There's there's multiple ways that we will conduct inspections or have opportunities to go out there and look at things and make sure things are operating properly. I'll try to do this separately and as distinct as possible. So if the company was to start up under this new permit, the first thing they would do is begin operating and doing shakedown of the new abatement equipment and such. And the permit is generally written that they have to test that equipment within 365 days and prove that it's operating at the efficiencies that they told us were that it was in the permit. So that's that's kind of one way. We would generally go out and observe these tests. We have staff that verify they're doing calculations correct, reviewing reports, and the inspector looks and looks at operational parameters of what's going on during those tests. The second way that we would do is by by annual inspection. So any major source facility like this one, we are always going out and conducting an inspection a minimum of once every two years. So that's kind of the second way that we could go out and review records, look at operational data, make sure control devices are working properly, et cetera. The third way, and this is this one sometimes gets confusing, is eventually this permit will be rolled into its renewable operating permit. It's it's a permit that adds all the PTIs that Dave has issued for this source. And once it's into that renewable operating permit, they are then obligated to notify us every six months of any deviation from any permit condition in that entire permit. So they have their own self reporting obligation in addition to our stack test observations, our own scheduled inspections. And then a fourth way would be is if we were to get odor complaints or we have known abatement issues, we may decide to just conduct additional follow up periodic inspect inspections at the facility.
So you you said a few words that I just want to clarify. One of those is deviation. So what Bob meets, what he says that is the company is required to look at every single condition of their permit and sign off on the fact that they have met that condition, that if they don't do that, that's called a deviation. It's basically saying like, we didn't do this. We didn't follow up on something. We didn't meet this limit. And when they send those reports in, which they're required to do, and they have to sign off that they're true, Bob or and or Arana, look at all of those, examine them very closely to ensure that there's nothing else that might be missing in that. I think that one of the things that we also want to emphasize is that when we do get an odor complaint or any other complaint to complain from fallout, you know, dust getting on things, paint spray getting on things, whatever it is, our staff try to be as responsive as possible, you know. Folks that live around these facilities are our eyes and ears. We don't have staff to be able to put them at every facility 24/7. So if there are issues, we really do account on people that live in the area to let us know so that we can respond as quickly as possible to make sure that the company is doing everything in their power to get things under control. So even though sometimes it can be frustrating, especially dealing with odors, if you're having odor issues from a facility, we would urge you to continue to let us know what is going on so that we can take care of it. So I know that that's can be very, very frustrating for folks. I used to be an inspector a while ago, and that was always one of the things that folks would get frustrated on. They'd say, Jennifer, you know, why can't you make this stop? And and sometimes odors can take a little while, but we do try to be responsive to all of those. And a lot of times that does lead to further investigations. So we're checking up on these companies a lot. Bob, you also said scheduled inspections. So when we say scheduled inspections, and it's a little bit different now during the pandemic, but we don't necessarily mean we call the company up and we're like, hey, we're going to make an appointment to come out there in a month, you know, make sure you have everything under control. It's more like what it used to be before the pandemic is we show up and we'd say, hey, we're here for your inspection. When we say scheduled, it just means that for our staff or air quality staff, that it's on our list of things we have to do that year. We have to do that month or whatever that case may be. It's a little different now with the pandemic. We do usually have to call and give a heads up, but it's not a long timeframe. It's not something where it's enough heads up that a company, if they were doing something really wrong, would be able to get all their ducks in a row and and look perfect just for the time that we're there. So we're very contentious of that. And we want to make sure that we're seeing companies operate the way that they operate every day. So I know there was a lot of questions in there. There was another question in here that I want to make sure we get to. And Brian, this is going to go to you. And this question is, you know, are there any emissions that there will be health impacts on a level that might impact the surrounding community? And how do we kind of look at that? I know we have our specific screening levels that are our health based screening levels, but maybe you could talk a little bit about how we do that.
Yeah, for screening levels for emissions that from a facility, we compare a lot of those components to our screening levels. Our screening levels are calculated based on some of the lowest concentrations that are actually administered to animals and cause the slightest health effect. And then a lot of times what we'll do is take that level that causes a slight health effect and divide that by safety factors. So fit factors of 10 or 100 times or even more to kind of give a level at which there is a reasonable certainty of no harm. So we're so as we do these screening levels, we're constantly looking at levels which cause even the slightest health effect and going many times lower than that to assure that a population is really protected.
So when we look at these in regard to a permit like this, there are specific things that might come in in the permit application where Dave would get a hold of you or one of your staff, Brian, and say, you know, there are these certain compounds. Can you take a look at these and just make sure that they're going to be meeting all our health based screening levels, which are designed to protect even the most sensitive groups, correct?
Correct. And we do an extensive literature review to make sure that we capture all the data that we possibly can to ensure that we set a level that's protective.
All right. Thank you so much for that. So we're going to go ahead and shift over to our public hearing. I do have one more question. So we'll get to this one. And then we're going to go ahead and shift over to that public hearing portion. So just kind of giving everybody a heads up. So Dave, this question is going to be for you. And we did talk about this a little bit a little while ago, but just to reiterate, they want to, the question is, does the RTO, which is the regenerative thermal oxidizer, which is the piece of control equipment that reduces volatile organic compounds? They want to know, does this piece of equipment reduce solvent orders and pollution? So could you just talk a little bit more about that for me?
Sure. In short, yes, they were they reduce pollution and therefore are most likely going to reduce odors just on the basis of the the typical RTO requirement. And as they are in the permit is that any VOCs that go to the RTO, the RTO has to have what's referred to as destruction efficiency, which is the amount of VOCs or solvent or of those types of compounds that are introduced to the RTO, it has to destroy them. They turn into, you know, other, you know, non water and CO2. But basically, they are burned from what they are. And the typical requirement is 95%. So if you were to send 100 pounds to an RTO, then worst case scenario that is allowed is five pounds to come out of it of those 100 pounds that go through. And that's where, you know, we compare that five pounds to, you know, the the respective screening levels that Brian was just talking about. I mean, that's just an example. I'm not, I'm not saying that's what it is. I'm simply saying that that was an example relatively easy visual or visual, really, but example that I was trying to give is that you put 100 pounds to it, 95 or 95 of that will be destroyed and turned into other other compounds that are not as harmful.
So this goes along back to what Bob was talking about when it comes to the testing that's done. That's one of the things that many times is verified so that the company comes to us and says, hey, we want to put this control equipment in. We we know it's going to destroy 95% of the pollutants that we're putting into it. We go, okay, that sounds great. But now you need to verify that that's actually happening and you need to do that through testing. So that's another one of the conditions in the this proposed permit that if the permit was approved, would be required similar to what Bob was talking about earlier. So as promised, I want to shift over to the hearing portion right now. It's just about seven o'clock. So there's if my staff, thank you staff very much for your answers to all of the questions tonight. Thank you all for all the questions. We always appreciate it when people ask great questions, which you all did. So Jay, I will ask you to leave your camera on as the decision maker and the rest of folks can turn their cameras off if they'd like. So we have some specific things that we need to talk about when it comes to the public hearing. And I actually have a specific statement that I need to read to you. I know it's kind of boring. And if you've heard these before, you'll know what that is. But I just want to remind folks as we get into this public hearing portion that in during this portion, we will not be able to respond to your questions. So a lot of times folks will present questions as part of their comment. That's perfectly fine. We just won't be responding to those tonight. Also, again, I just want to remind you that you will have an opportunity to provide comments in other ways. After this hearing is over, this is not your only opportunity. So I don't want anybody that isn't quite ready to provide a comment to feel any pressure to do so tonight. Again, you can raise your hand to make a comment verbally by using your icon on the bottom of the screen. And you can also, if you're calling in, hit that pound two. If you feel more comfortable typing your comment into the comment box, you may do that. And I will read your comment out loud. So as I said, I'm going to read this very exciting opening statement to all of you. And I apologize, this is kind of the formalized portion of the evening. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon. I am with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And I will be the hearing officer tonight. We have Jay Oligar, Assistant Division Director for the Air Quality Division, the decision maker for this permit application, listening in on the hearing tonight as well. This hearing is for the draft air permit for the proposed changes to an existing air permit, including the number and size of some of the fuel burning equipment, changes to the location of the pollution control equipment, and updates to exhaust stacks at FCA Warren Truck located in Warren, Michigan. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed changes for Warren Truck an opportunity to provide information the department may use deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues that we should consider. Please note that this is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposed changes. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing your comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether this permit will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that by law, the department is not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed air permit. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed air permit. The public comment period for the proposed permit began on April 28, 2021, and it will end at midnight on June 14, 2021. Additional information may be submitted through that time. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the proposed air permit will be made. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three of these scenarios, all the interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public meeting and hearing will be directly notified of the decision. This notification will include a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the approved permit. As stated previously, you may submit a written comment at any time to the email address that we will provide. You may also type the word comment into your question box and submit your comment in writing. I will read aloud all comments you submit during the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I will unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to three minutes. If you're speaking, I'll let you know, or I will try to. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as the technology does have some challenges for doing that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed air permit and to listen to your comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make statements. So I will do that in a second. All right. And then I do have a couple of people who have called in. So just as a reminder, if you've called in and you would like to speak verbally, you're just going to want to press pound two on your phone. And that will raise your hand so that I can unmute your line. And I'll give you just a couple of minutes to decide if you would like to make a comment. All right, Ms. Peak, hold on for one second while I unmute you. Okay, you should be able to unmute your line and talk. And why don't you go ahead and try to do that? Okay, yes, I think we should. So if you can just state your name for the record and any affiliation that you might have, that would be wonderful. And then go ahead with your comment.
My name is Vanessa Peak. I am a resident in the area and I'm also with Urban Development Corporation, a nonprofit organization focused on trying to bring stabilization, revitalization to the Detroit area near FCA. I just want to really reiterate in the past that we've had some serious problems with VOC emissions coming from the Warren Truck facility and obnoxious odors. And it's been quite challenging to get these matters addressed. With respect to EGO, we have a very good representative that we can call upon to assist us. And we run into problems with businesses on the Detroit side. We've been very successful in bringing resolution to a lot of environmental issues. However, because FCA sits on the border on the Warren side, they do affect us in terms of the plume effect, the air emissions coming over. And it presents a problem when we call EGO because what ends up happening, everyone says, well, I'm not responsible. It is is a challenge because FCA sits on the Warren side. We're not really getting the support that we truly need to address environmental issues when they're affecting us in Warren on the Detroit side. One of the things also that I would ask is a list of the VOCs for this permit. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you so much, Vanessa. We really appreciate your comments tonight. Right, just giving you guys a minute in case you would like to make a comment. All right, Julius, I was practicing your name in my head in case you wanted to make a comment. And I still don't think that I'm going to be able to say it properly out loud, but I'm going to try. So Julius de Bardelben, okay, I probably did not do that right, but please correct me and let me know how to pronounce your name. If you would like to just say your name and any If you'd like to just say your name and, um, any affiliation you might have, you should be able to unmute your line. There you go.
Uh, Julius Tabar Leben, uh, resident in the area across, across from the, yeah, the facility. I, a lot of the technical jargon, I am completely lost. I simply want to suggest that, uh, the capacity, uh, when I smell odors or the obnoxious odors, um, is have an opportunity to have someone we can respond back to. And hopefully, all of the, the, uh, engineering functions that you went over tonight, that the, the, uh, company in question, FCA, and as well as the, uh, Eagle, uh, assure us as residents for our safety and well-being, that they're going to be compliant with those. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your comment, and I apologize for not pronouncing your name properly. I appreciate the correction. Okay, just looking to make sure that no one else has any comments that they would like to make. Like I said earlier, you know, there's definitely other opportunity for comments, so I don't want anybody to feel pressured to do it tonight if they're not ready. So I'll just give you another minute here. So I don't want to cut anybody short either. Okay, well, thank you all so much for your comments. I'm going to have to read a, a quick closing statement to officially close the hearing, and then we will talk about a couple of those other things that we had mentioned earlier. Um, this one's a lot shorter than the opening statement, so just bear with me for one second. Um, so thank you sincerely so much for taking time to participate in the meeting tonight. We really appreciate your interest in Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision of the permit. Um, the hearing is now closed, so thank you again. Um, but before you all take off, and obviously you can if you want to, but I do have a little bit more information that I thought you might find helpful here. Um, so this is just going over some of those other ways that we talked about to submit a comment. So even if you submitted a comment tonight, Julius, Vanessa, you, you don't have to be limited to that comment. You're definitely allowed to submit other comments if you'd like to. Um, and we have a few different ways that you can do that. So you can submit those in writing if you want. You can send those right to our permit section manager, um, Annette Switzer. Since we have some folks on the phone, I'm going to read that address out loud, just in case anybody wants to jot it down. Um, so that's Annette Switzer, Permit Section Manager, and it's at Eagle, E-G-L-E, um, Air Quality Division, or just AQD. Um, the address is P-O Box three zero two six zero, and that's in Lansing, Michigan. And the zip code is four eight nine zero nine dash seven seven six zero, although I don't know if you actually need those last four digits to, for us to get it. Um, but you can also email us, uh, your comments. It's great if you can put FCA Warren Truck in the subject line, but we'll probably figure out even if you don't do that. But that email address is eagle dash AQD dash PTI, public comments@michigan.gov. So I'll go through that a little bit slower. It's eagle, it's E as in elephant, G as in go, L as in love, E as in elephant, dash A as in apple, Q as in queen, D as in dog, dash P as in Paul, T as in Tom, I as in igloo, and then the word public and the word comments, so all of that swished together. At Michigan, all spelled out, dot gov is in government. Um, and then a really easy way for you to get ahold of us to make a comment, if you want to just do it verbally, or you can even write it down and then give us a call and leave it on our voicemail. Um, and that number is five one seven two eight four zero nine zero zero. So that's a great way for folks, um, that don't have time to either get something in writing, or maybe it's eleven fifty-nine on June fourteenth, and you want to quick get a comment in, please feel free to use that voicemail box. Um, we greatly appreciate that, and that's a really nice way for you to leave comments for us as well. Um, so I had sent in the chat a link to the other information that we talked about regarding this project. So if you're just calling in, but you do have access to the internet, you can always go to michigan.gov slash air. And then sort of on the middle, bottom, right-hand side, you'll see a, a, a dark blue box that says public notice. When you click on that, you just want to look for, um, PTI, public notice, or, or PTI, NSR, public notice. I, I don't think I quite got the words right there, but, um, but look for that. And then, once you get there, you're going to want to just look for things that are open for comment. Um, on that page, you'll find the proposed project summary. So I had talked about this before. That's kind of, it's a, it's a little higher level document than what Dave went into. Dave did use a lot of technical jargon, and even some of my other staffers, we use a lot of, um, words that aren't things we normally use in, in regular, everyday life. Um, but this proposed project summary is a pretty high-level overview of what this project is really all about. And you can dig deeper if you want, you know, read that technical fact sheet. It does talk about all the different rules and regulations. I mean, if, if you're into that, it's, it's a great way to immerse yourself in air quality, um, stuff. You can also look at the proposed permit terms and conditions. Um, and then we will, once this is recording is posted, we'll put the link to the recording there as well. So if you're looking at all this information and you're still going like, okay, I attended this meeting, I read through all this stuff, Jennifer, and I still have no idea what you're talking about, or I still have questions, please get ahold of us and ask. We are more than happy to answer questions. Um, on the screen right now is the staff that we heard from tonight. And then in this middle portion here is Arana's information. So Arana is the local inspector there in Warren. You can always give him a call to talk to him about this facility specifically. He's happy to take your complaints, um, like Bob said, during normal business hours, he's at this number that's listed. So take advantage of that. Um, like I said, all, all of the staff folks that you heard from tonight are definitely open to answering any questions that you might have. So we're, we really appreciate you getting ahold of us and, and trying to clear up stuff if you don't understand it. That is definitely what we're here for. So greatly, greatly appreciate everybody taking part in this meeting tonight. Thank you so much. I appreciate, um, the person, you know, who you are, who requested that we have this meeting. So we really do appreciate your interest in what we're doing. Um, I'm going to go ahead and end the meeting for the evening. I hope that everybody has a great rest of your night, and we look forward to talking to all of you soon.